I'd like to welcome you to a special Leach Town Council meeting on Tuesday, December 18th. Well, it's 7:08 PM. Glad everyone got here safely with the nice weather we're having. Keep in mind, we live in a desert. There'll be some time in the future when you'll wish it was raining like it is out there. I'd like to start off with... Actually, let's switch that to three. I don't know why. Let's do a roll call, starting on my right. Frank Boyko.
Angela Rohr.
Alan Roberts.
May Lee.
Joe Howland.
Yeah, you got it right.
Thank you, Peter. If we knew who we were...
Yeah.
We're just checking the public to see if you're... Let's do a pledge. Frank, will you lead us in that?
For the allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Are there any declarations of abstentions or conflicts by council members? Seeing now, we need to approve tonight's agenda. It's not a consent agenda. There are no minutes from any other meetings or no other items other than the agenda itself. Angie suggested... Go ahead and make your suggestion.
That we move item seven on the agenda through four, six.
You want to trade it to six and seven? I'm fine with that.
I then move that we approve tonight's agenda with the modification that items six and seven we switched and also that these items two and three, the pledge of allegiance and the whole.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved by Joe Allen, seconded by Alan Roberts, to approve tonight's agenda with the changes of trading action items six and seven and items one and two. No, two and three. Sorry about that. Two and three respectively. All those in favor?
Aye.
And you post. Motion carried. Also note in our roll call, our attorney Heath Snow is here and our contract planner, I did put it on here for announcements. I did have a couple of... One thing, the town has the position open for a deputy clerk recorder right now. A lot of people will ask where this posted. We're the political subdivision of the state of Utah. We use the Division of Workforce Services to post all of our job openings. That's where you'll go to see information about that posting. I think that's the only announcement I have. I think I'll hold on one. Okay, let's move right on to item number six, which is expenditures of park impact funds. Angie, I'm going to let you take that over.
We have some impact funds that are expiring next month and specifically $1,300 for parks, almost $3,300 for roads. And I wanted permission to be able to spend that $1,300 before it expires.
So that's the actual dollar amount that we're looking at?
Yes.
Just $1,300. Bob, you need to make a note of that actual dollar amount.
Do you have any specific projects in mind for this ones?
Okay, Angie. Can you explain where these funds are going?
There's $1,300 that are expiring on January 16th unless we encumber them or spend them. And so at this point, what I'm looking at doing, the easiest thing, is that we will use the picnic tables out of the Silver Reef Park and we can use some more here. And so we're going to extend those funds on the same quality picnic tables that we currently have at Peach Pit Pavilion. Is it Peach Pit?
Peach Pit.
And that, I'm hopeful by at least three tables there are expiring. And then coming up very quickly in the next few months after that, we have another $4,000 to allocate or encumber for parks and sandwiches coming up. Do you have anything else?
Well, we did want to use, I think we checked before, to use some funds to repair the road coming in to both the parks and provide that.
So are you going to encumber it to that or something?
No, I think we encumbered five fifty some.
Five, I already have some.
Angie, let's say the tables come in more than that. Maybe we want to increase that dollar amount because we have the funds for the impact fees.
Right.
Yeah, so you might want to reconsider what that dollar amount is that we would approve for expenditures or either put a maximum on it or a maximum could be...
Twenty-six.
The entire amount that you have. I mean, it's just...
Well, why don't we go ahead and say up to $2,600? That's the first two ones that are going to expire.
Excuse me.
Yes, Loi.
Yep. May I make a recommendation that the council gives some thought to safety concerns at the CCC camp? And I'd be glad to meet with anyone about some of those concerns.
That would be... And yes, there are one particular one, I think I discussed with you before.
Correct.
That's that the stairs that the scouts put in over and above their project here in Castro that are very insane.
All right. Okay, we'll talk about later.
And we have had some discussion as a council on looking at the CCC camp as incorporating it one of our parks that we decided as a group really doesn't make the best of sense on that. It's a struggle as to how to finance some of the properties that the town owns. That's a good example, the CCC camp. We elected not to incorporate that as a park, therefore, you know, park funds cannot be used there. General funds can be and...
Oh, so unless we incorporate it as a park, it's been impacted by CCC camp?
Park impact fees are specific to there. We have to designate that as a park and... But it could be used for any improvements. It could not be used for any of the payments.
But we do have funds for park expenditure within the general budget. I just want to make sure you were aware of that.
On the impact fees that Angela wants to... We won't have to do the encumbrance for the roads in a motion. That document is what the state will be looking at, that we show documentation of what we have planned for those impact fees. We won't be spending those at this time. In the future, when that expense takes place, then we would make that home.
All right, so I move that we allocate $2,600 to the park impact fee funds to use them towards tables on the two parks.
It's been moved by Angela Rohr and seconded by Frank Boyko to allocate $2,600 in park impact fee funds for the use of picnic tables at Silver Reef, both parks as the legislature stated, which specifically is Silver Reef Park and Peach Pit Pavilion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Because it's the expenditures, we need to do a roll call vote. So Frank?
Frank Boyko, yes.
Angela Rohr, yes.
Alan Roberts, yes.
Frank Boyko, yes.
Joe Howland, yes.
Bob, are you comfortable with the language on that motion and the results? Okay, moving on to item seven. We have before us a final draft development agreement from an applicant, Greatvine Wash, that had some pen and ink changes in a meeting we had last Wednesday. Those pen and ink changes were made and that draft in printed form is right there in front of you. Each, read that book right there. Each council member received that in electronic format. It's also been available since last Friday on the council website in electronic format. And Joe, you specifically emailed some individuals that had personal concerns that you emailed Heath is our legal counsel there. There has been no suggestions that I have received. I'm not sure about each council member. I would ask each one of them individually. I don't know of any pen and ink changes at this point.
I'm not aware of any except for one that was suggested about the possibility in section 10.2. We have language in there that has maximum equivalent residential building units for the property that the developer owns, being set at 1403, and stating that there could be up to 2,500 for the overall project. The project being defined as all the developers' acreage and all the property that was annexed at the time. There was a suggestion that that be reduced to 2,397, which correlates with one number in exhibit K to the development agreement. And I see no problem with that.
What was that number then, 20?
You've got two numbers in the annexation agreement. You've got 2,500 in the body of it because you have 2,397 in the exhibit.
Could you clarify your statement? Because you left some of that out, like the BL and land that was annexed along with the rest of the developer's property. Six hundred full acres. This property that we're dealing with is somewhere between 370 and 400 acres. I just feel that's... Somebody didn't think that had been changed.
No.
That 2,397 was exhibit, she was...
I'll see.
...the exhibit day, the annexation agreement.
But other than that, Mayor, I'm not advised by the other reports.
Heath, I'd have your opinion on one. Just a clarification. Member community contacted me with a concern about section 17 regarding right-of-way. This would be an adjacent property and it could potentially be impacted by the development. Their concern is over eminent domain. And it's the paragraph that talks about, if you see your yellow highlights or elsewhere, the next sentence after that that begins, "All right-of-way acquisitions and construction required by this section shall be consistent with general plan and planning documents adopted by the town in support thereof and shall be reasonably related and proportional to the anticipated impacts of the project. However, developers shall cooperate and coordinate with the town to acquire additional right-of-way or make additional system improvements at the town's additional cost or in return for credits consistent with this agreement." I can see the importance of having that sentence that says, "However, developers shall cooperate according to the town." Would it be in the town's best interest if the town needs to make additional system improvements? The concern that the resident and citizen raised was could him this in any way obligate the town to move forward with eminent domain on behalf of the developer?
No, it's referred to the developer shall coordinate with the town.
Any further discussion from the council?
Did you want me... I had five in the... They talked to me and I...
If you feel that it's something that has merit, Frank, I think that you should bring that up if it has merit to make a change to this document that...
Well, part of it was the same one that Joe brought up. The other one had to do with concerns about dedicated roads and having providing, you have for the road in 66 feet or wide, which might be later on have to be being tried to meet our requirement there. Another question was asked regarding whether a development could be approved if they didn't have dedicated roads. We talked about defining that nature and the question of how St. George did theirs. And I talked to Bob and some of that. So the, you know, and I just kind of agenda concerned and I kind of looked through the document and highlighted some of the things that as council we agree on and change. So we're very, very polite, supporting, keeping the town, you know, appreciating our efforts. They say which way or whatever that they felt that they just expressed. So that's kind of...
On the one area in the annexation agreement that did case 66 foot width, that access road traverses through county property and county would obviously have jurisdiction over the size of the road. However, it goes from town to county, town and the developments that are town, we have within our ordinances requirement for certain types of developments and subdivisions of minimum of 66 feet. That's why we put that number. Even though we're not attempting to usurp jurisdiction over the county's road, we're just simply saying since the development, this actual development is in our jurisdiction, we're going to at least make the access road meet our minimum of 66 feet. The county has requirements that as development grows and there's a size of trip per day that develops into a major arterial and the nerve standard, they could require wider or different, another access to the whole process.
The document that was included in our, with our agenda, we have a copy of them. Do you have to bring it? Is this the reapportion?
It is.
Yeah, just a simple explanation. We took each village and based on its percentage to 2,397, we use that same percentage and times that percent by 1403 to get the same. So the villages are of the same percentage size, just reduce the size of the total of all the villages. I believe it's about 60 percent, 60.54 was the...
If there's no further discussion, I'd look for a motion on this agenda item.
Well, the reason I ask is that the numbers didn't appear to be any different than what I mean, you know, it says the retail was...
The retail stays the same.
Active passive space.
Yeah, the active and passive space doesn't change. The area within each village that is designated as active and passive open space doesn't change. It's simply the total units. See here, for instance, Village C, what time is 218, then Village C is 128.
Got it.
Any further questions or concerns from the council? Yeah, wherever you want. Go ahead.
I just had some remarks on one of them tonight and one, I'll get this to you afterwards because I like to enter in the minutes intact. I'm thankful for everyone's interest and input in the Greatvine Wash development plan. What we're looking at tonight, I hope, addresses many of the problems that have been voiced during these many meetings. It's not a perfect document and many of the remaining... Can you hear me okay? Many of the remaining concerns should be worked out in the future, site plans and subdivision plans. Slopes, fault lines, antiquities, tortoise, environmental issues, soil, sewer will all be big issues to be addressed as Greatvine Wash approaches shovel to soil. But the largest concern is the access. The primary access does not appear to meet the minimum width of 66 feet for any development to miss. In effect, a legal landlot for the development of this property to move forward is in place. The town council does not support any forcible taking as in condemnation of bordering property. Our community of about 320 residences has been overwhelmed by the prospect of being enlarged almost six times by this addition. And it will be quite an adjustment all around. But again, I just wanted to thank everyone for their input, all the time and energy that has gone into this and your attendance. And I certainly hope that we still see some of your faces after we pass this.
Do I have a taker while making a motion?
Sure.
We've got to get out of here tonight at some point. I move that the town council grant the mayor authority to sign the Greatvine Wash final development agreement as it is currently written.
Any clarification?
Motion to approve the development agreement and authorize the mayor to execute it.
And I will throw in something else. So what I'm going to say is that motion dies for lack of a second at this point. We need to look at it as the development plan, not just this agreement.
Development plan.
Yes.
With the agreement along with all exhibits.
Because the agreement is part of the development plan.
I'll restate it then. I move that the town council grant the mayor authority to sign and approve the Greatvine Wash final development plan as it is currently written.
Sorry.
Clarification. Do we approve it? We authorize the mayor to execute it?
You're correct.
Sorry. Your motion was that the mayor approves it.
One more time, Jill. You're doing fine.
Play the game, Justice. I move that the town council approve the Greatvine Wash final development plan as it is currently written and grant the mayor authority to sign said agreement.
And are we making the pen and ink change to 2,397 or would you add it with the initial motion?
Along with the pen and ink change.
In section 10.2, 2,397.
Modifying section 10, the number of units in section 10.2 from 2,500 to 2,397.
Did that, Bob? No.
We state with...
Just go through it again, Joe, real slow and we'll see whether we get a second on that.
All right. I move that the town council approve the Greatvine Wash final development plan as it is currently written with the pen and ink change to section 10.2. Modifying the maximum allowable units from 2,500 to 2,397. And grant the mayor the authority to execute said documents.
I have a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved... It's been moved by Jill, Alan, and sent by Frank Lloydville. Do you want to raise that motion, Bob?
I move the town council approve the Grapevine Wash final development plan as it is currently written with penning changes to section ten point two and the maximum, changing the maximum allotments from twenty-five hundred to twenty-three ninety-seven and grant the mayor an authority to execute that document.
May I have a question?
Yes.
Should that not be the debt penning changes for ten point two where the twenty-five hundred goes to twenty-three ninety-seven?
I would love to, we should say the maximum.
Okay.
Let's just say that the penning change in section ten point two, changing the number twenty-five hundred to twenty-three ninety-seven.
Do you want to make that, I'm going to, do you want to make that part of the amendment?
Should I restate the whole thing?
No, just say.
Well, that's.
Because you'll set a record.
So how do you want that to read, Jill?
I want that section to be not maximum allowable units, but simply changing section ten point two where it says twenty-five hundred to twenty-three ninety-seven.
My second. Are you good with that?
Okay.
Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. We just assume to this roll call, especially because of how heated it may be, and we'll start on your end, Jill. You want an alphabetical? Yep.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have the results of that, Bob?
Yes.
Motion carries. Actually, maybe I'll make this statement after. Is there a representative from Grapevine that desires to make a statement at this point?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, Matt, will you come up? Speak a little bit closer into the line, council. People can hear it, it'll record better.
Mayor and council, I do appreciate the time to make a statement this evening. It's an opportunity for the applicant who I'm representing to make a record of our position on the action that's just been taken. So we appreciate your time and your patience as I make a statement. And just on a personal note, as a council member myself and in other community, I certainly respect the work that you do here. So things like this, I certainly take a pleasure in them, but I hope you appreciate where we're coming from. The annexation development agreement between the town leads and the owners of the Grapevine property sets forth certain obligations of the town and the owners and grants vested rights to the owners in the MXD zoning ordinance for uses permitted therein and a project density of twenty-five hundred residential units. As the record before the town council indicates, the owners have complied with the requirements of the annexation agreement and have followed the procedures set forth for review and approval of a proposed development agreement in a form acceptable to the owners. On May thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, the owners made application for the final development plan approval and submitted additional information required by exhibit J of the annexation agreement. Since that time, many, many meetings and discussions have been held between the owners' representatives, the town attorney, town staff, planning commission, and town council, including multiple of the owners. On February fifteenth of this year, the owners obtained the recommendation of the planning commission that the town council approved the development plan in a form presented to the commission. In response to nearly every concern or request of the town council, attorney, and staff, the owners have further consented to modification of the development plan and development agreement to address the reasonable concerns of the town and offered significant concessions and compromises. Prior to the town council's consideration of the proposed development agreement on October twenty-fourth of this year, the town staff reported, and I quote, "The planning documents, i.e. the development agreement and development plan, et cetera, appear complete and in order. The proposed plan meets the requirements of the MXD zone," end quote. Notwithstanding the recommendations of planning commission and town staff, as well as the compromise and concessions offered by the owners regarding overall residential density, and despite the fact that the development agreement was then in a form acceptable to the owners, the town council tabled the proposed development agreement on October twenty-fourth and has continued the table until today, nearly sixty days later. On November fourteenth, the town council considered and did not approve a form of the development agreement that incorporated additional changes that the owners had not agreed to. The development agreement was not acceptable to the owners primarily because it unilaterally reduced residential density below the compromise number offered by the owners in violation of the annexation agreement and against the owners' wishes. On December twelfth, immediately following a closed meeting, the town council took up a revised version of the development agreement, again containing, incorporating unilateral changes which the owners did not have an opportunity to consider and to which they could not respond. These changes included, but were not limited to, first, a unilateral change requiring a sixty-six foot right-of-way for the primary road access to the development as a precondition to the effectiveness of the development agreement, unsupported by any of the traffic and transportation studies undertaken by the owners or any legal requirement or findings of the town council. And second, the elimination of modified height, size, and other standards contemplated by the annexation agreement permitted by the MDX zoning ordinance and previously approved by planning commission and staff. Third, the unilateral reduction of the term of the development agreement in disregard of the reasonably anticipated development timeline and multiple reasonable compromise for the owners. Now, on December eighteenth, town council has approved the development agreement with these unilateral changes in a form that the town council knows violates the terms of the annexation agreement and is not acceptable to the owners. By approving the modified form of the development agreement, the town council has limited the vested rights of the owners granted pursuant to the annexation agreement and in violation thereof. The record indicates that the version of the development agreement presented to the town council on November fourteenth was in compliance with the annexation and development agreement and the MXD zoning ordinance. As such, there is no basis for the town council to impose any additional density reductions. More specifically, the town council has not shown and cannot show that its reduction of residential unit density was, quote, "found necessary based on particular attributes of the property as determined by studies," end quote. And that quote is from the annexation agreement, section four A, as required by exhibit J of the annexation agreement. Rather, the town council has used an incorrect application of average unit density to justify its unilateral reduction of density from twenty-five hundred units approved in the annexation agreement to fourteen hundred and three residential units. The annexation agreement clearly contemplated development of all twenty-five hundred units in villages located within the owner's property with no density applied to BLM property. It did not contemplate an average density applied uniformly across both private and BLM property. The town council's actions therefore violate the annexation agreement and do not meet the prerequisites stated for properly limiting the project's density. The town council has also repeatedly shown it is willing to take these actions without a single finding on the record just in support of its actions based upon the health, safety, and welfare of the public. In taking these actions, the town council has disregarded the requirements of the annexation agreement in favor of responding to public clamor and at the owner's expense. Additionally, and as noted before, the town council has unilaterally added a sixty-six foot access road requirement to the development agreement as a precondition to the effectiveness of the entire agreement. This is an unreasonable and unfounded requirement which ignores reasonable development phasing and is the equivalent of a total bar on development of the owner's property. The town council has adopted this requirement with full knowledge that it would have this effect. Yet, knowing that litigation was threatened, if the town did not take some action, the council has approved the development agreement with these and other unacceptable and unreasonable requirements. Unfortunately, the intent of the council's action is evident as an attempt to prevent the project as envisioned in and approved under the annexation agreement, as well as to inoculate the town against imminent litigation. It is equally clear that the town council's intent was not to establish reasonable conditions of development consistent with provisions of the annexation agreement. The owners are therefore left with no choice but to consider seeking the reports. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. I would like to make a couple of statements if I can. Cory, I'm going to pick on you and your group for just a second.
I don't know.
Only because you're in here.
I'll say it.
You want to be picked on anyway. One thing that was disconcerting to me was what was presented in the media on that November, after that November fourteenth meeting where it stated that the town had shut down the Grapevine Wash development agreement. That is not the action that took place that night. I think it needs to be cleared up and understood that we did not agree to the development agreement that was before us that night. I think it's important for everybody to understand because everybody that's in here is a landowner or a property owner. This council and myself, whether I sit in this position or whether I'm a citizen, property rights are something that is very important and, I'm not sure how to say it, each of us think differently. And we think differently about our own properties. And we think, well, we have vested rights in our properties of whatever it may be. And it doesn't matter where it's at. And we do. Properties are governed by certain laws and ordinances, whatever that property happens to be zoned as unless you're going through a process for a different type of zone. I think it's very important that government, a body of politic, follows that process of law and gives due process of law for whatever the application may be just before them. There was a statement made in our, after the meeting last week by an individual who thought that through this process this year, specifically with Grapevine Wash, the statement was made, I think it's brought our community closer together. I will tell you that it has not. It's created more division than already existed. The division doesn't just happen magically. The division doesn't happen because of an applicant that comes before a body of politic. The division happens because the citizens of the area allow that division to happen. The only way it's going to change in this town is if we collectively change the mindset or the way that we present ourselves to each other, present ourselves to a, whether it's a town council, whether it's a planning commission, whether it's, whether it's someone wanting to open a store or a restaurant, whether it's somebody wanting to build a single house, whether it's somebody wanting to do with whatever's allowed with their properties by the zoning and the ordinances and laws that govern it. I will use one, one thing that happened earlier this year as a prime example. And most of you remember a home that was being rented out for a vacation rental. Thank you, Angie. A lot of times when a group of people get together that are very unhappy about something and the outcome moves the direction that they wish that it would go, they feel that because the outcome went the direction that they wished that it would go, it was, it was them grouping together that made the difference. When it comes to the process of law, that's exactly what needs to be looked at on every situation. I will tell you that the actions taken by this council for that specific vacation rental were not because of a lot of individuals in town being unhappy about that. It did not follow the laws that we have within our ordinances. That's it. Simple. Cut and dry. And that's what I would expect from any body of politic, whether I was a part of it or whether I'm a citizen sitting out where you're at. I expect those individuals that represent me to follow that process of law. And if some of those laws don't make sense, if some of the ordinances don't make sense, you go through the process to make the changes. That's what it's about. Because that process is important to protect not only the majority of the people, but even that one individual that may be different, that may want to do something with his property that's allowed, but nobody likes whatever he's doing with it. Just because the majority doesn't like it, doesn't take that right away from him that he has the governance itself. Sir, any comments from the council? Heath, do you have a, this document in front of you, what that?
I do not have an execution period.
Okay.
All right.
Angie? I would like you to look at this one. Have we made the changes on ten point two?
I don't know if that change is made right there.
Mm-hmm.
What I'd like is to verify that that is the actual document that was before us. Here are those two exhibits. The only thing that was changed was that penning change of twenty-three ninety-seven. Is that, needs to be presented to our first recorder.
Okay, we're up to, actually, you want to do updates by staff or do you want to move because it's a little bit open here?
Mary Christmas.
Do you have any updates?
Before I make the vote, I'd like to wish all the citizens a happy holiday. And I'd like to echo a couple of things here. The energy that everybody's put in, that they count and we wish to work continually on, as we're working forward to make this town what you guys want it to be. So we'll need to continue to have your support. It's not like because now we voted and we're moving on and something else and we all just stand and go someplace. We need your support on all issues, whatever it may be. So I wish you a happy holiday and thanks.
May I ask if the town will accept finances to help fight this lawsuit? Andy, from the citizens?
At this point, Alan, I would say that we would not accept finances. We'll see what the future brings as far as costs.
There are people here that are with you and want to help the town.
Well, there's people that live here that at some point, if those costs get extremely high... Well, there's people that live here that at some point, if those costs get extremely high, every citizen in this town is financially responsible for that.
And people who aren't citizens of this town can be financially responsible if you would accept it. Thank you.
Thanks Alan.
I may have documents and information that would be very helpful in fighting this if you would be interested in those. Can you not?
I will tell you that we're not going to sit here and have discussion as far as any direction. We have not.
Just the offer is there. When the litigation is filed, just keep in mind that I have many documents and a lot of information that will help you in this. As a body of politics, for the vote that was cast, we knew what was coming down the pipeline acting as well.
Any?
If we prevail, is it written that we agree that the family have to pay the legal expenses?
Yes.
Conversely. Should we not prevail?
Yeah, but if we do prevail, we won't be paid anything. Isn't that what they agree with?
Yes.
Not necessarily.
It is in the agreement. Whoever wins.
Prevailing party is entitled to an award of attorney's fees. Having a judge award you attorney's fees and collecting your attorney's fees sometimes can suit a particular need, although the applicant holds the law proper.
It's not an answer that I could give you of lack of light. That ultimately that's up to the courts. We get to that point, that is who will make that decision.
The discretion to award attorney's fees is solely a judge's and it's one that's not our fellow courts have long since.
I would encourage us to withhold speculation for the public, see what happens next. And with that vote, I move that you adjourn.
Thank you.